Good evening. The Tuesday, January 21, 2020 Planning Commission meeting is in order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
James, can we have a roll call, please?
Lenny Nelson.
Here.
Patty Crowen.
Here.
Miles Schlesinger.
Here.
Josh Brainerd.
Here.
Marcy Baker.
Here.
Kim Blackerby.
Here.
All right. Any agenda changes or revisions, Anne Marie?
None tonight.
Okay. I'd like to just take a moment to introduce the newest member of the Planning Commission. Welcome, Kim. We're happy to have you here. We appreciate your offer to join the party.
The party?
Yeah, the party. Could you, I'm not going to put you on the spot for too much, but could you just give us a, you know, a minute and a half synopsis of what you've been doing the last few years and why you're here?
Well, I guess the last few years, I retired in April of 2017 from a career in Human Resources after some, almost 40 years, living in Colorado. And my wife had, and I had purchased a home here in Lincoln City. And we moved here, and so for the last few years, I'd been enjoying the Oregon coast and children having grandkids and doing all those things that retirees do, so.
All right. Excellent. Well, thank you. I hope you enjoy your tenure with us.
I look forward to it.
Okay. We have minutes from our regular meeting of January 7th. I assume everyone has had an opportunity to review those minutes, so I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor, say yes.
Ayes.
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, hearing none. Any changes, corrections, revisions? Nice job, James.
Thank you.
All right. All right. The meeting minutes are approved. We, I guess we don't have any final orders, resolutions, or written communications?
Not presently. There will be, after the conditional use permit hearing, there will be deliberations on the bluff ordinance.
Right.
And so staff will likely ask the Commission to also move to approve a recommendation based upon the deliberation, but that will be after the deliberation.
Okay. All right. So for now, we don't have any. Okay. We are now to the public hearings. The first one looks like there's a request to continue to March 17th. That's the design standards, which was continued from October 15th of 2019.
Correct.
Okay.
I have found, when I've been going through, working on getting it right, and I want to make sure that it's done correctly, there are several things in the existing code in parking, landscaping, and in processes, for example, site plan review process, that need to be changed for the design standard revision to go through and, to go through correctly. So what I would like to do is do the DLCD notice for those parking landscaping process changes so that you would hear that concurrent with the design standards. That way, it all flows together smoothly.
Okay.
And we don't have a mishmash of...
Inconsistencies?
Of inconsistencies.
Okay.
That's my goal.
If anything, I hate a mishmash of inconsistencies.
Okay. So we need a motion to continue.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. More time.
I do have a question on it, so I don't know when to ask questions.
Yes.
Can you just tell me?
You may ask questions anytime you like.
Okay. All right. Do you have to be recognized or something like that?
You just did.
Okay. All right. I'm just curious, what is the design standards for residential, commercial, everything?
Currently, it's chapter, well, no, it's just commercial. It's, the design standards right now are in Chapter 17.74, and they only apply to the general commercial zone and the recreation commercial zone. And then, they only apply when site plan review is required. And then, they only reply, apply to building site. There are so many ways in the current code that they don't apply, that that is one of the things that I'm trying to rectify in the revision, is to make sure that they apply in all the appropriate locations. And unfortunately, there are a number of chapters that need to be, an inconsistency removed, just a simple language change to have them be effective where the city wants them to be effective. Thus, and I'm discovering that more and more as I'm going through, putting the final touches on, that, oh, this is now not going to be consistent with this section, and it's not going to be consistent with this section. So I'm trying to, doing my best to capture all of those inconsistencies in one go-around so we don't have to come back every two months with a revised ordinance.
And residential design appears somewhere else?
Yeah. So there are no design standards for residential. Single-family dwellings require two design features, and that is required in the chapter for single-family residential dwellings itself. And there are no design standards for multifamily dwellings. This revision adds design standards for multifamily dwellings.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
And I neglected to mention, these design standards have been in process for a number of months. There's been community input and business input, and it's been very complicated.
Sure.
We've had work sessions on them, so I apologize for not prefacing that.
More things to catch up on.
For you. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. It is now 6:08, and the public hearing for file CUP 2019-05 is now open. This public hearing concerns a request for a conditional use permit to add four additional spaces to the Devils Lake RV Park, an existing 85-space RV park located at 4041 Northeast-West Devils Lake Drive. That is assessors map 07-11-02-BD, tax lot 1201, for those keeping score. That is in the recreation commercial or the RC zone. The applicant is the Devils Lake RV Park, and the property owners are Bob and Lori Swan. The Commission must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the Commission wish to declare an ex parte contact, a conflict of interest, or a bias in this matter? Okay. Hearing none. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the qualifications of a Commissioner to participate in this matter? Okay. Thank you. The following statements are required to be made at the commencement of the hearing pursuant to the City Code and ORS 197.7635. Staff will now read a list of the applicable substantive criteria for this decision. Anne Marie?
The applicable substantive criteria for this decision are found in Lincoln City Municipal Code, Chapter 17.60, Conditional Uses, and Chapter 17.28, the Recreation Commercial Zone. Specifically, in Chapter 17.60, there are five criteria. One, the proposal is in compliance with the Comprehensive Plan. Two, the site for the proposed use is adequate in size and shape to accommodate the use and all yards, spaces, walls, and fences, parking, loading, landscaping, and other features required by this title. Three, the site for the proposed use relates to streets and highways adequate in width and degree of improvement to handle the quantity and kind of vehicular traffic that would be generated by the proposed use. Four, the proposed use will have minimal adverse impact upon adjoining properties and the improvements thereon. Five, in areas designated as requiring preservation of historic, scenic, or cultural attributes, proposed structures will be of a design complementary to the surrounding area.
All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable substantive criteria that Anne Marie just listed, or such other criteria in the plan or land use regulations which the person believes applies to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to Luba, the Land Use Board of Appeals, on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the decision-maker to respond to the issue precludes any action for damages in the Circuit Court. Prior to the end of this hearing, any person who participated may request a continuance to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence, or request that the record be left open to submit additional written testimony, argument, or evidence. Before the staff presents a report, I'd like to summarize the public hearing procedures which have been adopted by the Planning Commission and the City Council. A summary of those procedures is on the table by the entrance to the chambers. Generally, the order of proceedings will be as follows. These preliminary matters and required statements, followed by the staff report, any questions that the Planning Commissioners have for staff, the applicant's presentation, those in favor of the application, those neutral, and those opposed, testimony from public agencies, rebuttal by the applicant, requests of continuance or to leave the record open, close of the hearing, close of the record, request to submit written argument, deliberations, and decision. The City has established some time limits. The applicant will have 15 minutes and may reserve up to five minutes of that time for rebuttal. After the applicant testifies, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If the Planning Commission has questions, your time responding to those questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please print your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up sheet at the table at the entrance, and when you do speak, speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to James. Okay. That's the end of the preliminary matters and the required statements, so could you please present your staff report?
Thank you. For the record, my name is Anne Marie Skinner with the Planning and Community Development Department. This is the staff report for case CUP 2019-05 for the Devils Lake RV Park. The site is addressed as 4041 Northeast-West Devils Lake Road, and I will direct you to the screen. The site is outlined in blue, and it is, this is Devils Lake Road, if you follow the arrow, and this is Highway 101. So the site is located at the southwest, southwest corner of the intersection of Highway 101 and Devils Lake Road. This is the zoning map that is on the screen, and you can see that the site is zoned Recreation Commercial, and it is, for the most part, surrounded by Recreation Commercial. To the east is Recreation Commercial, to the west is Recreation Commercial. This portion to the north, and then across Highway 101, is General Commercial, and this portion to the south, southeast-ish, is residential, and southwest is General Commercial. Planning and Community Development mailed notice to the owners of all properties within 250 feet of the site on November 12, 2019. The NewsGuard published the public hearing notice on December 23, 2019. By way of background information, in 1994, Lincoln City Planning Commission approved the original conditional use permit allowing development of the RV park. At that time, they requested and received approval for 80 spaces. Subsequently, conditional use permit 05, excuse me, 05-02 was approved to add 1,113 square-foot meeting hall and a 390-square-foot maintenance and storage building. And in 2016, an additional approval was given via CUP 2016-01 to convert six existing tent campsites to three RV sites, with one of those three being a space for a manufactured dwelling for the resident manager. Also included in that approval was conversion of the playground into two additional RV sites to give an overall total of the currently existing 85-space RV park. In this application, the applicant is requesting approval to add four more RV spaces, which would then allow for a total of 89 recreational vehicles. I would like to read into the record the definition for recreational vehicle. Means, as defined in LCMC 17.08.010, recreational vehicle means a vehicle with or without motive power that is designed for human occupancy and has a gross floor area not exceeding 400 square feet in the setup mode, and as further defined by rule by the Oregon Department of Consumer and Business Services Building Codes Division. The applicant is proposing to place these new, I'll look at a different map for this. The applicant is proposing to place the new spaces, three of them that are being identified as spaces F, G, and H. F would be placed approximately here, G would be approximately here, and H would be approximately here. And then, the fourth space is space I, and that would be down in the southeast corner of the site. In reviewing the criteria for approval, criteria number one, that the proposal is in compliance with the Comprehensive Plan. Staff finds and determines that the criterion is met or is not applicable. The RC zone allows an RV park as a conditional use. The Comprehensive Plan, however, contains no directly applicable policies for an RV park, which can be applied directly to the proposed addition of the four RV spaces. Thus, staff's conclusion that that criterion is met or is not applicable. Number two is a little more involved. Number two is the criterion stating that the site for the proposed use is adequate in size and shape to accommodate the use. And there are a number of requirements for an RV park that have to be met, and staff went through each of those for these four additional spaces. The first requires surface drainage plans for the entire park. Of course, those were submitted and approved previously for the entire park through the original conditional use permit application. For the four additional spaces, surface drainage plans were submitted. They were reviewed by the Public Works Department, and the Public Works Department had no comments on those surface drainage plans. The space provided for each RV needs to be not less than 1,200 square feet. The applicant's drawings submitted on January 13, 2020, show that the square footages provided for each of the four spaces exceed the 1,200-square-foot requirement, so that requirement has been met. Each site requires a paved pad of at least 400 square feet. The applicant's submitted materials showed the paved pad to be at 398 square feet, so it's short by two square feet, which is easily modified, and staff noted that as a condition of approval, that the paved pads would need to be increased from 398 to 400 square feet, and in that case, the requirement will be met. The RVs need to be separated from each other and from other structures by at least 10 feet, and the submitted materials showed that the RVs would meet that space separation requirement. The submitted materials showed no accessory structures, and with the addition of accessory structures, it is likely that that 10-foot separation would not be met. So any applications or requests for accessory structures would have to be reviewed carefully at the time of submittal.
What kind of accessory structures?
Like a canopy, or an awning, or some type of a porch covering that would be added to the RV.
And would that necessitate a permit from the city?
It could necessitate a building permit, depending upon if it was attached permanently.
But it could not.
So as it stands right now, the RV spaces themselves meet the separation requirement. The addition of accessory structures to the sides would then, would be a violation of the spacing requirement. It appears that there's room on the ends, and there's probably room on space I for accessory, any accessory structures, but G and H, there's no room on the sides for anything other than the RV.
Okay. Miles, did you have a question?
The canopies, a lot of the RVs have canopies that they roll out over the front door entrance or the little steps to go up to it. Is this, that type of accessory dwelling, or is this a permanent structure that's owned by the RV park?
It would be something that would be permanently attached to the RV. If you're referring to like a rollout awning that you see on RVs, that slides out with the push of a button, or the crank handle, that is not what this is referring to.
So are these RVs permanently situated there, or is this a pad that allows for visitors to come with their RV and park there for a week or two, or is there meant to be a structure there permanently?
There is not meant to be, well, and I'll go back to the definition of RV, which is "may or may not be mobile," with or without motive power that is designed for human occupancy.
Well, right, but that could be like a fifth wheel, or, so we don't know whether or not these are, these pads are meant to have something constructed on them that would be there all the time, or...
They may or may not be.
...to be pull-in, pull-out kind of?
The code doesn't specify, or I should say, the code doesn't prohibit or allow it one way or the other, as long as it meets the definition of an RV. So with or without motive power, not exceeding 400 square feet, and meeting the requirements of the Oregon Department of Consumer and Business Services Building Codes Division, which has its own separate definition for a recreational vehicle.
Did you have a question, Kim?
I guess I'm just trying to understand, so these aren't, it's not a mobile home park, it's more of an in-and-out RV park?
It's not a mobile home park.
Right. So are there RVs that are there semi-permanently? They may be there parked and live there all year round?
I will let the applicant answer that question.
Right.
Madam Chair?
That affects the structures.
Yeah, it does. Along that line, if I could ask Richard, doesn't there a law now that says you can't prohibit people from living permanently in an RV park?
Well, I believe there is something along that lines. I can't put my finger on it right now, but...
I thought that was a recent addition, a recent thing from the legislature.
The last two years, I think.
So any of these could be permanent structures, and in fact, I do know of people who live permanently in these RV parks. I'm not saying this one, just I do know of it.
They could be. It was in the last legislative session that that was codified, that you cannot prohibit permanent, unfortunately, our code does not.
So, there you go.
With or without motive power, as long as it doesn't exceed 400 square feet, and it meets the Building Code Division definition of an RV. We don't say one way or another if you can live there permanently or not.
So my question wasn't related to whether I cared whether it was permanent there or not, but I guess if somebody were to be living there all the time, then there's a chance of putting up some sort of a structure like a tool shed or something else, which could come into play with what we were talking about.
That is correct.
And I also noticed later on also, if they ever made a permanent structure somewhere in this, can't tell you exactly where I read it, but that it would have to, then having connected electrical and things like that, somebody made an opinion in here somewhere about if it became a permanent structure, then additional codes would have to come into play.
Correct. Okay.
Well, my question then would be, if somebody were to move into one of these, stay there, and build a tool shed or a portico, a built portico, not just an awning, who would be responsible for seeing that that wasn't, that that was a violation if they hadn't come in before the planning director?
Well, it's similar to, it's very similar to other portions of the code that have requirements that don't require permits and were complaint-based, so if someone noticed what they thought was a code violation and reported it as a code complaint to the code enforcement officer, then the code enforcement officer would follow up. For instance, fences. Fences are not supposed to be taller than six feet, they're not supposed to be in the clear vision triangle, but they don't require a permit. So the only way that that is policed or enforced is by complaint. Same with accessory structures. Accessory structures don't require a permit if they are less than 250 square feet. Okay. Off-street parking spaces have to be provided. The applicant's submitted materials showed that the four new RV spaces will be provided with asphalt driveways for parking. Spaces G, H, and I show a 12-foot by 20-foot asphalt driveway. Space F is shown with a 12-foot by 16-foot asphalt driveway. The code requires that the standard space requirement be met for a parking space, and that standard is nine feet by 20 feet long. So based upon the submitted materials, the parking space or space F is four feet So based upon the submitted materials, the parking space for space F is four feet short of the required 20-foot length. So as a condition of approval, the parking space will need to be increased to meet that minimum requirement.
Which one's F, please?
F is, whoops. F is the one parallel with...
The road.
The road. And the driveway, I believe, goes this way.
So the extension of that driveway will not impact the egress-ingress for the other?
They will have to likely do some, well, it'll possibly have to be curved, and/or they will have to move the pad to the north, so that then the driveway can shift to the north, so that there is more room to lengthen it to the east.
Okay.
It'll just take some tweaks in the design. Roadways have to be no less than 30 feet in width, and no less than 20 feet in width if parking is permitted on the edge. The submitted plan shows that the existing roadways are over 30 feet in width, and no new roadways are proposed as part of this application. There is a requirement for fencing, and the fence and landscaping plan was approved as part of the original RV park conditional use permit approval. No changes are proposed to that existing perimeter fence, or the existing landscaping, and the outer boundary of the RV park is not being expanded.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You have a comment in here that three of those spaces, F, G, and H, are not inside the fencing?
Yes, because the northeast corner is a wetlands area, and to place the... If you look at this aerial photo, this is the fence. And it ends right here. This northeast corner area here is a wetlands area, and you're precluded from putting fencing in a wetland.
So how do you, how are we going to bring those two contrary statements together? If you have to have them fenced, and they're not fenced, then where are we?
Well... Previous...
Well, maybe more to the point. You can't put a fence in a wetland area, but you can put an RV pad?
No, the RV pad wouldn't be in the wetland area.
Well, it's directly adjacent to the wetland line that was established in 1995.
And that is, and I haven't gotten to the wetland stuff yet.
No, I know, but I'm talking about the, the suggestion here, and I actually approved this originally, was that the fencing should go all the way around it. Now, if you're going to start adding pads that are not covered by fencing, you certainly aren't meeting the spirit of the idea of fencing.
Well, you can certainly make it a condition of approval that the fencing go along here, outside of the wetland area.
Okay.
Next.
Trash receptacles, where that requirement was met as part of the original approval, and the application for the four new spaces gives no indication that there will be any changes to the current location of the enclosed trash receptacles, and there is no need for additional trash receptacles for the few amount of spaces that will be added. The park is to be maintained in a neat appearance at all times, except for vehicles, there shall be no outside storage of materials or equipment. This remains as a condition of continued operation of the park, as well as to the addition of the four new spaces. That would just be something that would come under code enforcement complaint-driven. So if a resident, or someone passing by, happened to notice that the park was not neat, or something was being stored outside, then that complaint would need to be submitted to the city for follow-up. And now we get to the wetland. There are two different kinds of wetlands. There's significant wetland that shows on the comprehensive plan map as part of the 1995 study that was done, and then there are jurisdictional wetlands that the city does not count as significant wetland, and they come under the purview of Department of State Lands. In this case, the city shows this green area with the blue diagonal lines as significant wetland. The city does not show this northeast corner as significant wetland. However, based upon previous approvals, and conversations with Department of State Lands, specifically Matt Unitas, as part of those previous approvals, this area was delineated as wetland, and this part was not. How?
Jurisdictional wetlands?
Yes. So these are jurisdictional, these are significant. However, none of the delineations show the significant as being a wetland. They're not showing it as wetland at all. What should have happened, if that was indeed the case, is the map should have been corrected per Section 17.46.090, which is a map error, and the applicant would have requested that there was a map error. We would have, the city would have reviewed it in conjunction with Department of State Lands, and this significant wetland that we are seeing on our map would no longer be here, if the map error was approved. I did, I could find nothing in the previous files that indicated any reference to this being a significant wetland. The original approval was done before this was mapped, because the study, the original approval was in 1994, the study was done in 1995.
When was it last, when was it last mapped as wetland?
In 2008. And then in 2019, AKS delineated, and that's what I handed out to you at the beginning of the meeting, AKS delineated what you see before you. And you see that there is no wetland in the significant wetland area.
Well, okay, all right. This, this map that you handed out, it's difficult to determine where the trailer, or the RV park overlay is on this. It's not shown, so it's difficult to identify. I mean, there are, there, in the legend, it has onsite wetland area, doesn't say whether it's jurisdictional or not, and there's no tie on this map to the project. So I'm having a little bit of a difficult time matching these up.
Okay. Well, that map shows this corner here, and the circle that you see is approximately here. Conditions of approval, recommended conditions of approval are: An application for Natural Resources Development Review with the accompanying wetland delineation of the northeastern area south of the existing access driveway shall be submitted for review prior to the site plan review meeting, and an amended site plan shall be submitted showing the area delineated in the wetland delineation report, and showing all portions of spaces F, G, and H outside of the delineated wetland.
Does this delineation satisfy that requirement, or will it be delineated again?
Well, that delineation, as you so correctly stated, does not show the location of spaces F, G, and H, and that is why the condition says that I need an amended site plan showing all portions of spaces F, G, and H outside of the delineated wetland.
Right, but they'll use this wetland delineation to create that map you're requesting?
Yes. Now, the second part of this is that, following up on the map error, I, and the applicant just submitted what you have before you to me, well, yesterday, so I received it this morning, yes. I forwarded it to Department of State Lands to ask for their comments, and basically to explain, my map is showing this as a significant wetland, this delineation shows no wetland at all in the area that my map is showing it as a significant wetland, you didn't mention it in your comments for this case, so can you tell me why? He called me back, in reply to my email, he called me, unfortunately, I was in a meeting. When I called him back, he wasn't available. In the message that he left, and this was this afternoon, he said that he did some additional digging, and found something in 1984, or 1994, which I'm assuming was part of the original approval, that there is an unmapped mitigation wetland. So the wetland situation at this point in time remains very murky.
Yes, it does.
Which is, which is why the conditions that I had recommended when I prepared the staff report a week ago, I'm still recommending stay, because if, if the wetland delineation can't show that spaces F, G, and H are outside of the wetland, then...
Yeah.
There won't be a spaces F, G, and H.
Yes, particularly with the wrinkle that this could be a mitigation wetland.
Correct.
So there's a little more information that needs to be...
Yes.
Figured out.
And site plan review is required for this, and that is why I tied the conditions to site plan review, so that if the commission chooses, the use could be conditionally approved based on all of the wetland information and Natural Resource Development Review applications being approved prior to site plan review. Backwards.
Okay, do you have more? Yes, question? Miles? Use the mic.
I think the wetlands is there, but it's on the north side of the driveway into the park, going up to the city property, which has a pump station on it.
There's wetlands there as well. The entire northeast corner of the site is significant wetland.
Is wetland.
Yeah, and the applicant originally wanted to expand the RV park into that area, and you're precluded from development in significant wetland.
Is that the, is that the pond wetland behind Wildflower Grill? I see the applicant's nodding yes, so, okay, I just wanted to orient myself where I am here.
I think the one behind Wildflower Grill is further, I would call it north of that.
I'm not sure exactly where Wildflower Grill is.
Ryan Gallery, Wildflower Grill.
Okay. Well, it's before West Devil's Lake. Yeah, it is, it's to the west of it, but...
Reduct, no problem.
There's a lot of water.
Yeah, and there's a lot of water in there.
Well, and...
Lot of water.
And if you drive by this area in some of our wetter winters, I mean, I'm talking about this RV park, it sheets water over there. I mean, it just, it sheets, sometimes they've even...
We've got a map, yay, good job.
Well, who, how much?
Okay, I got it now. Thank you.
In this area here, referring to the screen, so this is the site outlined in blue.
Right.
And this entire area is a significant wetland.
It's a pond.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
This area here, if you follow the cursor, is where, this is where he wants to put space F here.
Yes.
And then space G and H would be right here.
Okay.
His delineation by AKS shows this as a jurisdictional wetland.
Yes.
Our city map shows a significant wetland here...
Right.
Where there's already two spaces.
But we've already determined that the city map has issues.
Right. So that, and that's why I'm working with Department of State Lands to hopefully give me some clarification on that, so...
Okay.
Yes, it is, it's not very clear at the present moment. And... Okay. Criteria three, four, and five. Criteria three relates to streets and highways being of adequate width and degree of improvement. The site is accessed from Devil's Lake Road, which is an improved street. The intersection of Highway 101 and Devil's Lake Road has a traffic signal, so that criterion is satisfied for just an additional four spaces. The proposed use will have minimal adverse impact upon adjoining properties. There were no comments received from any of the adjoining neighboring properties, and staff finds that the addition of four spaces to the existing 85 will not have any adverse, will have minimal adverse impact. And then criteria five is preservation of historic scenic or cultural attributes, and this site does not contain any historic scenic or cultural attributes. So if it wasn't for the wetland, we would be left with the increasing of the spaces by two square feet and the driveway for space F.
Tell us about the natural resource overlay zone.
The natural resource overlay zone contains, is, is what contains the significant wetlands and significant riparian area, and development in the natural resource overlay zone is not allowed. There are two ways that you can have development in the natural resource overlay zone. One is with a variance that comes before the planning commission, and the other is with a map of, or claim of map error. Otherwise, if you have significant wetland or significant riparian area on your site, you cannot develop in that area.
So is the... Is the development plan for this site within the natural resource overlay zone?
It is. The portion, this portion is significant wetland, so that when you click on natural resource overlay zone, this area shows up, and that odd shape...
Thing.
Here, that two spaces are already in, shows up. Other than that, there is nothing.
Okay. Okay. Do you have more?
I have no more.
Any other questions for staff? Nope? All right. You? Okay, we're ready for the applicant's presentation, please.
Good evening, my name is Robert Swan, and I guess I can answer questions. We, should I just go through what, I can add some light to what...
Sure, go through whatever you'd like to add to what, what staff said, and then we can ask some questions perhaps.
Okay, the first question was the, when we were talking about accessory structures and RVs, in our park, we've got several monthly folks, and most of them are vacation homes. There are some actual units that are built, they're called park models. They are RVs, they're red labeled, they're less than 400 square feet, but they look like a manufactured home. And there's several people that have those in there, and they live in them, you know, whenever they're there. There's a few that live, live there full-time. These four spaces, we're planning on... These four spaces, we're planning on doing a permanent deal versus people pulling in and out, so we'd be using park models again, which are, you know, red label RVs, they don't move, once we set them up, they're on piers, and, and I've always tied them down, that's what Brandon and I, the building official, have decided to do, and he had me originally setting them, placing them in to manufactured home specifications, which means we tie them down so the wind doesn't blow them over, so they're safe, and, yeah, so anyway, these four spaces, we're planning on doing park model type, which is what a park model is, so less than four hundred square feet, they go in one time and they're done, less impact on the area, so.
Would, would those be sold to individuals, or are you planning to rent those out?
Most of those are owned by individuals, there's a couple we've ended up buying back when, you know, they wanted to get rid of them, and then we just, you know, sell them to somebody else, so, almost all of them are owned by individuals. There are a couple right now that are rentals, but we're into, you know, they will, same thing, when somebody wants one, they'll just do it that way. We like renting the spaces, they're much easier to take care of.
Okay.
So, so that answers that one. The, the fence-ish fence question, down through the wetlands, there, we have fence all the way around our property, and I think the purpose of a fence is to keep the messy-looking RV park a buffer zone from the homes around the RV park, and we own several RV parks and properties, we keep our properties in very nice shape, which are much nicer than most of the homes around us, but, the fence where it stops there becomes wetlands, and the vegetation gets so, I mean, it's, it's alder trees, there's a fir tree, there's, you can't see the RV park from outside the property in that area where the fence stops, so it's pretty much taken care of with a natural fence.
Would you be taking out any of those trees to put these pads in?
There will be a few alders that'll come out right up next to the access road to get the homes in, but, no, nothing real major there. So anyway, the, so we're pretty well-hidden by the fence, it keeps every, I mean, you know, all the neighbors are buffered that way. And then the wetlands thing, I think the map just didn't get updated. I know we did a delineation in two thousand and eight, which went through the state, which shows real similar, actually, it's a, I, it's real similar to the one that AKS just did for us in this last summer. We had started to delineate the whole thing, and then we found out it was going to be about thirty thousand dollars, and said, nah, we're not, we don't need to do that, because we're not, you know, building there anyway. So, I, I think that's just a map error. And I don't know, I think that's about all the questions you had when I was listening.
Was the playground required in your original permitting for this?
I don't know, because we bought it from, you know, two previous owners.
So you bought it after the playground was removed?
No, the play, it was, there was, playground's still there.
Okay.
Yeah, and the last, I guess, it is still there now, it's up in the, at least one of them is, I don't know if there was two at the time or not, and it, it needs to come out, it's in pretty bad shape, and rarely gets used, most of the folks, when they come down here, they go to the beach, or, you know, it's, so it's just, yeah.
Okay, that was just curiosity. Where would the runoff from these new pads flow to?
It'll be just all like they are right now, most all of it's pretty flat ground that runs to the road and, down the road and out.
Does it run into the wetland?
It, some of it goes into the wetland, yeah, there's a drain field across there, there's a spring that runs across the property, kind of from the bottom-left corner to the intersection of 101 and Devil's Lake.
A spring?
There's, well, it kind of shows kind of a spring that runs across there, and that's kind of the lay of the whole land, the water, when it rains two inches in an hour, it's pretty much sheets that way and right out the driveway. We have three catch basins, I think it is, two or three catch basins, and the asphalt's pitched pretty heavily to go into the catch basin, there are oil-water separators, and then that water runs on down, so, but a lot of it runs surface.
Mm-hmm.
So it'd be pretty much what it's doing right now.
Okay.
Except we'll be catching some of it where the homes go, they'll actually get caught, and, you know, a lot of times, people put gutters and downspouts on, so that, you know, it's kind of consolidated to two front points.
Okay. Other questions? Yes?
So, thank you, Mr. Swan. Back to the question of the, the permanent structure, so you're saying that in F, G, and H, those will be permanent?
Correct.
And on piers and something like that, you said?
Yeah, they'll go on piers like you would set a manufactured home, tied down with skirting, yeah, and then hooked up, yeah, make sure that the, it gets, it can get fairly windy at the top corner of the property, less so down below. There's, oh, seven or eight of them in there right now, if you ever get a chance to drive through there. There is one that's vinyl sided, most of them are cedar sided homes, I think there's one that's, maybe two that are hardy siding, but they're all, they're like three hundred ninety-six or three hundred ninety-eight square feet, the manufacturers are real careful to keep them just under four, because they've got to do that to get their label.
So, Anne Marie, help me, I can't find the language in here that I was referring to earlier, that if there's any permanent construction or something, that the
It, there's a letter in there from, it's part of
Yes, and it's part of House Bill twenty-three thirty-three, and I'm just going to read it. It helps clarify that the park model is a temporary condition, and if they intend to use it as a permanent living dwelling, then it has to be converted to a structure. Basically, that means that it is now subject to the state building code, and they have to get a permit for it.
So does that apply in this case?
So how does this come into play here?
That if they intend to use it as a permanent living dwelling, then they will have to get a building permit, because it will become a structure.
That's the point I was trying to get to, so you, you will be doing that?
I don't know if that can be done with a manufacturer, with a, with a red label RV to meet building codes, I was talking with Brandon about that, this, this new house bill has got some challenges and some real gray areas.
Explain more what a red label RV is, I'm not
Well, you've got manufactured homes that are, have a manufactured label, and they come in one, two, and three sections, some are even two stories, and then red labels are, the way I understand it, is an RV, which is four hundred square feet or less. So it's licensed as an RV, it's considered an RV, you could actually pull it around, but we actually, what Brandon and I have been doing is actually setting them up permanently so that they're, you know, safer to manufactured specs, we've actually gotten permits. The new code says that they, RV doesn't require a permit, so I'm not sure what to do with that one now, or how we'll deal with it.
That was the, that was my confusion.
Each municipality is, well, I don't know how they'll deal with it, it's, that's, yeah. I mean, do they not be at their house for a week out of the year, so it's not a permanent structure, I, that's an old, I, I don't know, you know, how they want to deal with that one, or how the state's dealing with that one, but.
Will they be surrendering the title and registration?
Will they what?
Will they surren, surrender the title and registration for the RV?
I think most, you know, I've got
No, I don't think they can turn those into real property.
I'm not, I don't think it goes for real property, I think it's considered personal property.
Okay, if they don't surrender the title and the registration, then it, it wouldn't be considered a structure.
Correct, and that's the way most of them are, they're considered personal property, they're not taxed like a, like your home is.
Do they have a title through the DMV?
They've got a DMV title.
Yeah.
So they're an RV, just like your fifth wheels and your, yeah.
But they And, and who holds that, that license? Do you hold them for these?
No, the owner
Whoever owns them, that's
Whoever owns it, so you build it and put it there, and then you sell it to someone?
Yeah, or I put it in for somebody, if they pick one out that they want to put there, and I help them place it.
Okay.
Because again, we're more interested in the RV park and the, you know, we, our business is to rent the spaces, so, yeah. And, and like I say, the lion's share of these are, most of these are folks that either live out of state and come for a few months out of the year, or they live in Salem and they're down here on weekends, and they like to fish and crab and so on, so that's a lot of what it is.
And they're hooked up to city water and sewer?
Correct.
I'm having a hard time understanding
Yeah, I have too.
The gray area between when a house is not a house.
That's, that's a big challenge.
When it's attached to city water, city sewer.
And there are no, there are no wheels, and they're attaching it to pilings.
And they're on pilings.
Yes, sometimes you leave the, sometimes you leave the axles on, sometimes you don't. The hose, the connection can be a flex hose, or it can be, you know, ABS, some of the connections are water hoses, sometimes I'll use PEX because it's easier connection, if it's going to be there a while, we don't have to worry about freezing as much.
Yeah.
So they're still kind of temporary, they're just hooked, the hose, the house hooks up to a hose bit, and it's got a fifty amp plug that plugs into the electrical, and the sewer just goes into a screw cap.
Okay.
So it's not like a house for you.
But it's on pilings as opposed to on wheels?
That's what we do with the park models, because they're fairly heavy and
And it's tied down.
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
Which could be a wonderful affordable housing, a lot of people, I, I have one, I live at Halaman, and I love the four hundred square feet and six hundred foot of deck that's on the river, and it's, I bet it's pretty darn cool.
For, for purposes of the, for purposes of the use, whether it is, whether it requires a permit or not, and, your earpiece falling out, whether it requires a permit or not, and whether or not it will be lived in permanently is irrelevant. Again, the, the application is for four additional recreational vehicle spaces, and a recreational vehicle is a vehicle with or without motive power that is designed for human occupancy and has a gross floor area not exceeding four hundred square feet in the setup mode.
Hey, that makes it easy for us.
Oh, I don't, I think there's more to, I think there's more to that story than that, just that.
If I could
Let's ask our attorney.
Well, I, I think Anne Marie stated it, but the, the issue here is, this is an application for four additional spaces, RV spaces, if, what the applicant should do, however, from this conversation, is taking a look at this house bill, HB twenty-three thirty-three, and maybe talk to the building official about it, because it certainly appears that there are some triggers where there's a rebuttable presumption that you have converted it, an RV, to a residence, and, and therefore triggers compliance with the building code. So, it's, a lot of what has been testified to sounds like the triggers here, you know, not having the wheels, connecting to utilities, basically rendering it immobile, those are all triggers for the rebuttable presumption that you have converted it and must now comply with the building code, so, but we're not doing that here, we're just asking whether or not there are
But it's a good heads up
Yes.
For Mr. Swan.
And Brandon, I obviously must know about this too, so.
Brandon and I have talked about it for quite a length.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
There's several things that I think feed, feed into this, one, all manufactured homes start out with a title, and they, they can't, they have to be converted to real property after they're installed, and there's certain criteria you have to meet, and you have to have it recorded, but if, where I'm having a problem with this is if they bring these park models, if, if we approve these pads, and then they bring the park models in, who's going to tell them they have to take them back out? Because they can't, they're structures.
They don't have to.
Well, if
If they bring in, in a recreational vehicle
No, I'm talking about these park models, that are, they're going to take the wheels off, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, who's going to suggest that they are now in violation and that it needs to be remedied?
Well, that's, the building official's going to look at these triggers, and if it requires a building permit, and he doesn't have one, and he's, and the triggers are met, then it'll be a building code enforcement issue.
Okay, now, this is, this has come up before, because there are building issues, and there are land use issues. We have zones and requirements all over the city of where manufactured homes can be that are less than a thousand square feet, there's only two places in the city that you can do that, excepting now we're making maybe a third, we have requirements for manufactured homes as manufactured homes there, and, there's one other great thing that I'm thinking about, so, we have, oh, and we have had manufactured homes that originally started out on rented land, it's since been converted, but it started out that way, and we required them to put them on sizable lots, because they were turning them into homes. So this seems contradictory to me that you can call it a duck, and when it turns out it's a swan, you, everybody doesn't pay much attention to it.
Well, it, it may be that the applicant's applying for RV spaces, and he maybe shouldn't be doing that if in fact he wants to proceed with these park models, because it sounds like they're going to be converted, and it's going to trigger the building code. But, again, the application before you is, is there sufficient, do you meet the criterion for conditional use for four additional RV spaces? We're certainly not approving the park models, that's not part of the application, we're just approving additional spaces and applying the conditional use criterion. The biggest hurdle to that seems to be the, it was the wetland issue, and Anne Marie's proposing to solve that with a condition of approval, also a big red flag to the, the applicant that, by the way, you know, the code says, we shall deny an application that infringes on that overlay zone, doesn't fully comply, it says shall deny, so, big red flag, you need to process a, a plan, map correction, or, you know, what was the other, apply for a variance. So, not, the conditional use isn't exactly clean, but certainly the, the issue that's being raised is not before you tonight, it is a building department problem, and the applicant, you know, if he wants to proceed with this tonight, he may, if he wants to continue it and go see what his other options are, he might want to, that might be a prudent path, but the application before us is conditional use for RV spaces, it's not citing manufactured homes, it's nothing, that's not what it is, it's
Right.
citing four additional RV spaces.
So, if I can summarize what I heard you just say is, if we just approve these for four additional RV spaces, and then the applicant builds or converts them to some structures, that's not what we're dealing with, and that would be a different
Well, if, if, if the building official says he's converted RVs, RVs to structures, and that's a building code enforcement action, it would probably then also be a planning enforcement action, because we approved RVs, spaces, we didn't approve new structures, so both would be implicated. But you can't, you know, you know, I, I realize he said, okay, this is what my plan is, well, maybe his plan needs to change, you can still approve an RV with the condition of approval, but that might need to be rethought when they think about what, how to use these spaces.
Okay. And the natural resources overlay zone issue?
It's, it's not actually a criterion that you're applying here, except to the extent that in one of the requirements for conditional use approval, it, it says, let's see if I have it on my screen. It talks about the, the site for the proposed use is adequate in size and shape to accommodate the use, and, and it lists yards and spaces and walls and parking and loading and landscaping, and it concludes with, and other features required by this title, well, that's pretty broad, and that could mean this title requires you to set aside significant wetlands and not impact them, and so, that's why I think Anne Marie's imposed a condition of approval, to make sure that that criterion is met. You could say, you know, I think maybe you ought to, you ought to demonstrate compliance, not just leave it as a condition of approval, so where's the, the variance or the, I mean, it's up to you. Anne Marie said, let's treat it as a condition of approval, you don't go forward unless you demonstrate to the site plan process that this was a map error, or you get a, apply for a variance, and the variance comes here, by the commission, so.
Correct.
And that's the, that's the issue that I see with the conditional use approval, that's the only glaring thing, but the, the possibility that we could have building code violations and, and others, that's not really in front of you for, for this.
So, again, it feels a little clunky to approve something with a long list of condition So, again, it feels a little clunky to approve something with a long list of conditions that, that may be more appropriately resolved before approving this conditional use. Does, does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I mean, there is another step. There is a site plan approval required.
Right.
So I think Anne Marie's hanging her hat on that, saying, you know, you got to go through this process. Heads up, you, you have to demonstrate you're not in these wetlands. Yeah, you're right. It would be nice if, well, I think it's feasible that we get a map error approved or a, a variance because of the fact that you have information in the record about the status of the significant wetland. Basically you have information that delineations that basically show it's not there, but that has to be nailed down. I think the appropriate place to nail it down is the site plan review process. Remember here we're talking about conditional uses and the impact mostly on surrounding properties.
Yeah.
Not so much the details of a site plan review.
Okay. So we could approve the conditional use with conditions that are all going to need to be proven in the site plan review process, which happens after this.
And I, I wouldn't suggest that if I didn't think it was feasible to prove them
Right.
Or if there wasn't enough evidence in the record showing that it was feasible.
Okay.
So you could continue this and say, hey, get us more detail on the wetlands or you can, you can prove it with the condition that Anne Marie suggested and let the site plan review team do their job, so.
Okay. Other questions?
Well, I have another comment along that. The, the Department of State Lands, Division of State Lands, said that they, these were wetlands and they could do the 50 feet fill and removal, which is always problematical to me because when you're building something like this, because you always frequently end up with all kinds of equipment in the wetlands, even though they're not filling the wetlands and they're destroying the wetlands. So if we were not going to revisit this wetland issue again, I'd like to see us put a condition in there that they have to mark off any wetlands and not allow any equipment or motorized vehicles in that wetland. Delineate it so I can't, so that they can't go, put a, mark it so that they can't drive their trucks in there.
So are you talking about significant wetland or just a jurisdictional wetland? Because a jurisdictional wetland, they can obtain permits from the state and fill. And then of course significant wetlands, they can't. But we've got some debate about whether or not, where it is exactly.
Well, can somebody again show me a map that where the, where the jurisdictional wetlands are versus the significant wetlands?
Not really because there's some question of whether or not they were mapped correctly in the first place.
Well, then I would say all wetlands. Just, you have to mark them so that, and no equipment shall be allowed to be driven into them.
Well, that's a good condition. It's anytime you have development adjacent to or close to a wetland, whether or not it's significant or jurisdictional, unless you've got a permit to fill it, you need to stay out of it. So marking them and, I mean, a lot of jurisdictions have things like barricades and things like that.
Yeah.
I, in terms of putting it into the relationship of the conditional use approval, I think you're stretching a little bit because it's more of a site plan criterion. You know, which, which of the approval criterion are you trying to address with that condition of approval?
Yeah.
Is adequate, is it about the adequate, maybe?
The fact that.
Adequate, adequate size and shape of the parcel because you don't want them, while they're constructing this, driving through protected wetlands? Maybe that's, that's the word to put it?
Well, Anne Marie commented in her things that part of this, these structures appeared to be in wetlands. If I remember correctly, is that not true?
The map, yes. It's because of the map issue. There are two existing spaces that are in what we're showing as significant wetland.
Okay. So that, that's what I'm talking about. If we create, if we show that there are wetlands on this property and there is these things that we are talking about tonight and two of them, then that, then we have a right to set a condition of how they can be used. Yes, no, maybe?
I, I think you just need to relate the conditions to the criterion. And I think you're talking about the criterion that says, hey, this has adequate space to, to do the proposed use. That's the criterion that Anne Marie's using to say, you got to demonstrate that you're not encroaching in significant wetlands.
Right.
An additional way of demonstrating you're not encroaching in significant wetlands is to physically put up a barrier. Some people put pipes and ropes, other people put, you know, two by fours and whatever that say, don't enter this area during construction. Sometimes even after construction, their jurisdictions will require you to put some kind of marker that says, don't go past here, you know, this is a reserved area.
Well, maybe what I really am trying to get at then is that recommended conditions by Anne Marie of four and four A could be added to.
Let me get to those.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I just want to support what, what Lenny's talking about there because that's something as I read through this that came to my mind is, you know, what's, what's the construction going to look like as we, I know two feet is only two feet, but then we start hearing about piers and an expanded roadway and things like that. So not only equipment going in the wetlands, but debris and, and soil and everything else that can come about from a construction site without equipment going in it, just stuff flowing into it. So there's the soil erosion barriers that can be put up and things like that. And it raised my intention more when I heard about, I don't know what kind of piers look like get installed or if you have to dig concrete piers to, to attach these to, then that brings in more soil disruption and things like that, so.
Yeah, piers would have to be in this area. My plan would be to do them hand, hand ducked. They're like two six by two six.
Uh-huh.
And then the block stacks go on top of those piers because this area we're talking about is so steep, it would be hard to even get a track hoe into it unless, unless somebody is very, very experienced. It's, it's steep, just right off the edge of our, I mean, not very far off the edge of our road. It's, it's quite steep. So I had planned on doing everything by hand. I'm not planning on filling or, or, or building up retaining walls or, yeah, don't want to go there.
And just digging out some.
That's a whole different, then you got to get a Corps of Engineers permit and, yeah. So you go in with a shovel and you dig a two foot by two six square to the solid ground. That's how much soil you disperse.
For the piers.
That gets a little footing and the blocks that on top of it. All that's done from hand from above. And I have no problem with marking off the wetlands when I'd have to get, you know, I'd have to pay to have the environmental folks come out again and mark where it is. But definitely not putting equipment in there. It's quite steep and, yeah.
And same thing with the asphalt extension?
Yeah, that's all up in the flat. That, that area up there is already nice and flat and graded and, and that's all on existing fill and, yeah.
So you could just dig that out and throw in some asphalt?
Yeah. Get some gravel down and then pave it. So it's pretty invasive. Well, yeah. Want to keep it clean and neat. I'm kind of a neat, little OCD to start out with. So, yeah.
So in terms of, and I realize we're still at the public hearing section, but in terms of the addition to four, you're thinking something like construction excavation shall not encroach into wetland areas and all wetlands shall be delineated and marked during construction? Something like that?
Works for me.
That would be, that would be good. So just hold that thought till we get there.
Okay.
All right.
We can argue about it after you get to deliberations.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions for Mr. Swan?
Well, the one other question that I have and I haven't heard it satisfactorily answered yet is the fencing. The objective of the fencing was to mark the entire RV park to close it off from traffic that's going by or, there weren't no other homes in there at the time those were built there. So it wasn't to protect them from homes that were nearby. There weren't any at the time. It was basically to close it off from traffic that was going by or any other thing that might be in that area. If you can't put the fence around the other ones, what do you suggest?
Well, I, I think that it hasn't been put around it before because it's steep enough and it's not visible from the street. I think it's, I must be because it's gone through several conditional uses and nobody's ever complained about it. No neighbor's complained about it and you can't drive up northeast west Devil's Lake Drive and actually see that area from the road. It's thick vegetation and now there's actually a, what, a four unit house in the way and then a kind of dilapidated boat garage from the marina across the way. You can't physically see it from anybody else. The only way you can see it is from an airplane. So I, to me, it seems like moot point, like why would you put a fence there?
So did you, you did not include that as one of your conditions to extend the fence?
I didn't. I read through the previous staff reports and they were silent on fencing.
Well, the only other thing then, then that I might be, might think that we might like possibly add as a condition of approval is that a site obscuring vegetation must be left in that area where fencing can't be put up. You've talked about that you'd like to do that, but I'd like to see it as, as a condition of approval.
That will be easy to do too because the wetlands actually encroach onto, according to the last report I got, they actually encroach onto the lot below us and we can't remove anything in the wetlands. So that would all stay.
I'd still like to see this condition.
It's a nice view. You get up in the park and you're like, like you're in the woods instead of, you know, on, on the road, the highway. So I'm with you. However you want to write it up.
Okay.
It would make me happy.
Got that, Richard? All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone testifying in support of the application? All right, seeing none. Anybody neutral regarding the application? And anybody in opposition?
Should not be supposed to.
Nope. Okay. I don't see anybody from public agencies here. So no reason for a rebuttal?
If station be left in.
Okay. ORS section 197.763, paragraph 6A states that upon request, the commission must either grant a continuance for no less than seven days or hold the record open for no less than seven days to permit any participant an opportunity to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence. Does anyone who participated, that would be you, Mr. Swan, desire to request a continuance to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence, or request that the record be left open to submit additional written testimony, argument, or evidence? So we're not going to leave it open? And do you waive the opportunity to submit final written argument after the close of the record?
Yes.
Okay. So we are now to.
You need to close the hearing and the record.
Pardon me?
Close the hearing and the record.
Yes. I need a motion to close the hearing and the record.
I move to close hearing.
Okay. End the record? All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Miles, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. The hearing and the record are closed and now we can deliberate. And I think you've shared with us your legal issues. Do you have any others that?
I, all I, I have written down here is that for addition to four A or four B, construction and excavation shall not encroach into wetland areas and all wetlands shall be delineated and marked during construction. And then this, I didn't really get everything. Vegetation be left in place where the site obscuring fence is required? Is that, is that right?
Well, I think, which ones did you say that, that didn't have the fence around them?
It's the wetland area.
Yeah. But I think we had four, four numbers that didn't have, which ones were outside of the fence, I guess is what I'm asking.
F, G, H.
F, G, and H. I'm sorry. F, G, and H are the ones that are outside of the fence?
Yes.
Okay. Then that, that there's, the site obscuring vegetation around, between those and the road shall be left permanently.
Be maintained.
Be maintained.
Vegetation around F, G, and H? Is that what you said?
Between, yeah, between that and the road.
Shall be left in place.
Yes. That makes me happy.
Okay, so I'm just going to quickly go over the, the staff recommended conditions of approval. So we're clear. And if anybody has any objections to them, please speak up. So number one is the 398 square foot paved pads for spaces F, G, H, and I shall be increased to 400 square feet with an amended site plan submitted to planning and community development prior to the site plan review meeting and shall be installed prior to placement of any recreational vehicles on the spaces. We're all good with that? Okay. The asphalt, number two, the asphalt parking space for space F shall be a minimum dimension of nine feet wide by 20 feet long with an amended site plan submitted to planning and community development prior to the site plan review meeting and shall be installed prior to placement of a recreational vehicle on space F. Okay? Number three, the 12 foot wide by 20 foot long asphalt parking spaces for spaces G, H, and I shall be installed prior to placement of any recreational vehicle on spaces G, H, and I. Number four, an application for natural resource development review with the accompanying wetland delineation of the northeastern area south of the existing access driveway shall be submitted for review prior to the site plan review meeting. All right? An amended site plan shall be submitted showing the area delineated in the wetland delineation report and showing all portions of spaces F, G, and H outside of the delineated wetland. And I think associated with that would be the addition of the restriction on construction activity within the.
As, as read?
The delineated wetland, as, yes, as you read it. Okay. All conditions of approval in the previous conditional use permit and site plan application for the site remain in full force and effect. That means your OCD keeps it neat and clean and the fence. And six, this approval is subject to all applicable federal, state, county, and local agency and jurisdictional requirements, including Lincoln City Municipal Code. It is the applicant's responsibility to ascertain all such requirements and comply accordingly. And I believe, Mr. Swan, that speaks to the issue of when is a house a house?
That's what we got to work with.
Okay, all right. I, I'd like the commissioner's opinion on an additional condition that prohibits accessory structures. What do we think?
I think that makes sense, especially for the, for the ones that don't have any space for anything to be added.
Yeah. It, it seems to me that the, they're sort of creatively put in there, close to each other and close to a wetland. So I would really like to see a prohibition of accessory structures on these.
I, I would agree with that and, and again, depending upon the definition of the housing, if they are quasi-permanent, then when somebody has something that's permanent, then they kind of want to have a tool shed or something.
Right.
And that would just be a natural recourse. So I agree.
Okay.
Or a deck.
Or what?
Or wanting to add a deck.
Yeah, decks are very common.
Exactly. Okay. So.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
You left out the one that I thought we had agreed to, which was the existing vegetation on GH. F, G, and H shall remain.
Okay. I thought I hit it, but you're, you're right if I didn't get that, yeah. So leaving the vegetation as a visual screen. Okay, so we've got that. The fencing's taken care of. The only other question I have has to do with this natural resource overlay zone. And I, I guess I'm assuming that the, that the wetland, the, the clarification of the wetland delineation mapping and, I mean, that that will somehow take that into consideration. But I'm concerned because it looks to me like there's construction going on inside the natural resources overlay zone. Is that incorrect?
Well, if it appears that way, it cannot continue because no development is allowed in the natural resource overlay zone. So once that is clarified, if there is something, if the site plan, once it's overlaid onto what he, what has been delineated thus far...
Right.
And there's any activity within the wetland, that can't happen.
So that's covered under number six?
I, I think the condition of approval that Anne Marie drafted will trigger that. If, if it's, needs to be revised because you've got to drop a space because there's a wetland there, then that's covered.
Okay. Okay, then I'm comfortable with it. Any other comments, conditions, suggestions? Phew. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve with the conditions as stated?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So this is a tentative decision of the planning commission. The staff will prepare a final order for adoption at our next available meeting. Thank you for coming. Yeah. We get into the weeds. No pun intended.
That's what we're here for, right?
That's why we're here. Okay.
Thank you.
We are up to 5.3, which is ZOA 2019-12 Bluff Ordinance Amendments. And if you recall, we discussed this at a meeting, I want to say it was a couple of months ago? Was it a month and a half ago?
It was December...
Seems like it was a year ago.
Seventeenth?
It was sometime last year.
Sometime last year. Um, I did, um, I did ask Kim to review the video of that meeting so that he would be up to speed and be able to participate, so... Perfect.
Multiple times?
Okay. Okay, so, um, the, um, we had a motion to close the public hearing, but we did not have a motion to close the record. We were leaving the record open for potential comment from the tribal representative?
Yes, from Pamela Barlow Lind.
Did we receive anything?
She submitted nothing.
Okay. So I need a motion to close the record.
Did we actually set a date where the record would close? Or did we just leave it open?
We did, we did set the date.
So the record is actually closed?
So it's actually closed, really?
I, I do think you should probably just take judicial notice of the fact that there's Luba opinion on your table that I handed out. And that's about this.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I can summarize it, but, uh, I apologize. I said it wasn't about what's on tonight, but I forgot about this continuation. The record was, is closed, but I think you can still take judicial notice of the law. And that's this legal sort of opinion of the Land Use Board of Appeals, basically saying that your ordinance that we're talking about, that this fix is about, basically requires that you measure from the unaltered bluff line. Not, not as the council had decided, the altered bluff. If you remember, there were two lines on the application, this, in this case. There were two lines shown, shown on the report. And the one line said this is 100 feet. The other one said this is 90 feet. And so they decided they were going to measure from the 90 feet, which was the line after they would remove 10 feet. So, um, basically, Land Use Board of Appeals said, that's just wrong. The, look at the language of your code. You have to start from the unaltered bluff. There were other, a couple of other mistakes in that. We, we missed the definition of, I'll say we, but we all missed the definition of footprint, uh, which include, specifically said includes cantilevering. And I believe the question was asked of Steve. He was chairing that meeting. Uh, whether or not, oh, the cantilevering was allowed and, and, and I, actually, I think Lindsay answered, oh, yes, it was. And in fact, Steve had asked the question, well, is cantilevering allowed? And it was actually not allowed. So, um, because it was included in the definition of footprint. But again, that's just something else that the petitioners caught and Luba pointed out. So, uh, essentially, there's a, a proposal here to, by the city council to amend the code to clarify that what we meant was unaltered, not altered. And so the Luba opinion, you know, came out and supports that. Now, what I want to make clear is, this isn't a, a change. So, oh, okay, any new land development regulation? I'm sorry, I kind of skipped ahead to the point where I, I give you advice, okay? But that's where we are in the script anyway. But, um, in the, uh, in the land use context, let me see, how do I... Okay. If, if in fact you adopt a new land use regulation after January of 2007, an owner of property, of residential property, can file a claim for compensation. It's called Measure 49. If we, if they prove that we, this new regulation has reduced their property value. So I want to make clear that we're not adopting a new regulation. The Luba just said, this regulation that you have is from, you measure from the unaltered bluff. Okay? And there was, someone had characterized it. It might have been a city councillor and explaining to someone, oh, well, what we're going to do is we're going to change it from altered bluff to unaltered bluff. No, you're not doing that because that could trigger Measure 49 claim. Someone goes, oh, well, you know, altered bluff, I could have put my house all the way out there and had a really big house, and now you've changed it and adopted a new regulation and said, unaltered bluff, that reduces my property value. I'm filing a claim. No. The Land Use Board of Appeals has said, existing code, measure from the unaltered bluff. You, city, were wrong in interpreting it to be altered bluff. So all we're doing is clarifying. So I just with that, I, I still think, I, I have one, at one point, I talked to Anne Marie and said, oh, well, maybe we should just withdraw this or, you know, because we've got the Luba opinion. But I think it's probably worth, and she talked me into it, just, we, we add a clarification to the code that the Land Use Board of Appeals has clarified that this means the unaltered bluff. You don't get to come in, push down a bunch of dirt, and then go, ooh, well, actually, now the bluff's way out there because you just pushed it out there with a bulldozer, and now I can have a much bigger house. Right, we, that's not what the intention, the Luba, if you read the opinion, goes back and starts talking about, hey, you know, this, the whole point of this goal is to protect the, the dunes and the beaches. And that doesn't mean push them down and then say, oh, I'll measure from here. So I said enough.
So... So what we're going to do is clarify. And this opinion from Luba will be incorporated into that clarification?
Yeah, I, I, this still has to go to the city council and, and probably, I mean, I think you could recommend approval of the ordinance as written, but you might also suggest that we add some language saying, this is merely a clarification of the existing situation as, you know, called out by Luba or something like that.
Okay.
We can add something so that people are on notice that, hey, this isn't new. Don't file a Measure 49 claim.
Okay. Okay. And then, um, wait, I'm trying to get to it. I'm a little curi... So it made it 20% of actual size, which makes it impossible to read. I, I'm fine with that, with going back and approving this that way. But I'm still wondering why, and I think it was on packet page 45, line 18. It still just says, "a registered engineer." And I, I know I'm, I might be beating a dead horse, but I've worked with a lot of engineers. And I think loopholes are, um, you know, they're, they're not, um, they're not useful to people who want to do things right. They're useful to people who want to do things a different way. And I don't want just any registered engineer to be able to sign off on this.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for bringing that up. And I agree. In my time on the private sector, all geotechnical reports have been prepared by a licensed geotechnical engineer, not a geologist. So I...
Well, now, that was a low blow to us geologists, but, okay.
Nothing against geologists, but they were the ones who, who prepared the, the reports. And so I agree with you and did not want to change the ordinance because the public hearing had been closed. And so rather bring it up in deliberation and add that as a recommendation to, to add that language to the ordinance that goes to city council.
Okay. So I, I would like to add that as a recommendation, that between registered and engineer, it says either geotechnical or civil. I'd even accept a civil, but not a nuclear or electrical or any other number of registered engineers I can think of. Otherwise, I guess the condition is then with the notification that this is a clarification and consistent with Luba's opinion. Okay? Any other comments on this? Questions? All right. Can I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
All right. And a second?
Second.
Okay. And all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Okay. Got it?
Got it.
Chair, would you, would you and the commission be opposed to considering a motion to approve the final recommendation based upon the changes that you've made for the chair to come into the planning office and sign later this week?
One of those. Is anybody in opposition?
The bluff thing you're talking?
Yes.
The bluff, yes. So anybody opposed to me coming in and signing it? Do I need a motion?
I move that the chair should be able to come in and, should accept the final order and sign off on it. Or whatever the appropriate language is.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor? Aye. No, any opposed? Okay. We can do that. All right. Any old business?
I have no old business tonight.
Okay. Any new business?
Well, actually, can I have old business?
Okay.
Um, one of the things that we talked about in the last meeting, and I wanted to do a little research before I brought it up. But there was a question that, what I don't think we discussed at length, about the idea of removing all residential, uh, structures, R1, no, single-family residential structures from the GC.
Yes. I was, I was asked by, uh, some of the other department heads to approach the planning commission with their thoughts on that.
Well, my thought on that, because I did think about it, was that that immediately turned to anybody who has a residential, um, single-family dwelling in one of those two zones into a prior non-conforming use.
Correct.
Which, although we have leeway in there on how you can get around that problem, I'm not real comfortable with it.
Okay.
That was my comment. I'm not in favor of it.
Okay.
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
There, at the first, uh, planning commission meeting of, of the year, one of the questions that I had for the planning commission, one of the three, I believe, was planning commission's thoughts on removing, um, single-family residential uses from the general commercial zone.
And the recreational commercial.
And the recreational commercial zone. So Lenny is, has given that more thought and, and is stating that she is not in agreement with that. So I will take that feedback back to the powers that be and report accordingly.
Well, it came up before. This isn't the first time that idea has been proposed. And the last time it came up, several people came rushing to the planning commission and said, you've just turned my house into a prior non-conforming use. So I know that people, when they stop and think about it, have some concerns.
Anybody else give any thought to that? Yet?
I mean, I, I thought about it a little. I was just kind of wondering what the bent, like what the reasoning would be for doing that. Because that was the same thing I thought, is, well, you'd make every house non-conforming that is there already.
It's already in the zone.
If I would presume to guess the reasoning by the person who made the request, my presumption would be to encourage residential use in residential zones and save the, the general commercial and the recreational commercial zones for commercial use.
Well, that might be appropriate in new development areas, but given that so much of this city is sort of cobbled together, mixed up, it would be difficult to, to do that. Okay. Any other old business? Okay. New business?
I have no new business tonight.
Okay. Planning commission training? Are we going to wait till we have another? Okay. We do have some planned, but we're hopeful that we will have another, um, planning commissioner seated soon. And then we will train everyone together. It's always more fun.
I thought we'd start with push-ups.
Yeah. I think it's a fine idea.
A guy would say that.
I'm going to be absent that day.
I'll, I'll, I'll video it. Oh, wait, we're already videoed. Okay. Uh, any reports and comments?
I don't have any reports and comments.
Okay. So what's coming up?
Next meeting on February 4th, we have a conditional use permit. And I am combining the site plan design review. Uh, I'm elevating that to the planning commission because it is rather a large project. They'll be asking for a number of adjustments. It is for the Northwest Natural Resource Center on 36th. So you will be hearing the conditional use and the, excuse me?
36th?
Northeast? Okay. It's, well, it's, I can actually show you exactly because it's on the screen.
This is Northwest Naturals' new maintenance yard and...
Right here. Huh. That entire piece of property.
Is that a stream?
I'm not sure if that, I have not looked at the natural resource overlay zone, but...
It would be nice to make sure we get the overlay.
Yes. And it'll be, it'll be a large establishment. Uh, there's an office building, all their storage, uh, truck fleet maintenance, truck fleet wash. There'll be a propane tank. So, uh, there will be a number of items involved in the resource center. And so it will be a conditional use. Site plan review is required. And the planning director has the ability, authority to elevate... to elevate a site plan review from the site plan review committee to the planning commission. And in my estimation, this will be a large enough project, and its proximity to residential on the east and the south. And I'm more comfortable with the planning commission making those decisions on the adjustments that have been requested to the design standards. So, that will be on February 4th. And also on February 4th will be an appeal for, which I mistakenly said at the, at our last planning commission meeting, would be tonight, and it's, it wasn't tonight. It will be on February 4th, and it's appeal for vacation rental dwelling that was approved, and the neighbors are appealing the approval.
Okay. Okay. So, we will be the VRD board at that point?
No, it was a land use approval, so...
A land use approval.
Mm-hmm. So, you'll be planning commission.
Okay. Oh, boy. Anything else?
Those were the only two items for February 4th.
Yeah, I think you might want to keep it that way because that sounds like a lot. All right. I think we're done. Anything else? Okay. We're adjourned. Thank you.
For a second and a half.